Welcome everyone. It is seven thirty-one on Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is the Warren Township High School District one twenty-one regular school board meeting. As we start out every meeting, if we could all stand and receive the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. First up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to tonight's agenda? If not, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Carlson. Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next up are recognitions. I understand we've got some student reps to the board to recognize.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask them to come up. If you're here because you've been helping me out this year, if you could come up. I'll go up there too. So tonight I have, let's see, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six. Jacob, you can get in this line too. Seven.
Confused.
And then Anya's on here. I got eight of about forty students that we just, I invited them all tonight, but we have a lot of really busy students. We have about forty students this year that last spring answered my call for help. I'm, I called them my student representatives. There's really three kind of groups in, in this, amongst these forty students. There are a handful of them that serve on our school improvement team. This is an adult team. It has a handful of school leaders on it as well as staff members. They meet, I think maybe six to seven times this year and talk about priorities at each of the campuses, priorities for the district. They've been involved with some of the Zoom calls that we did with other districts as we tried to learn about scheduling. So they're having, they're part of our leadership team when we're making some decisions about the school this year. A handful of them are board representatives here and they're coming to the board meeting and you're able to ask them some questions and get feedback from them. And then the majority of them are facilitators for our student feedback sessions. So we've done a handful of student feedback sessions this year. Some different topics that they've gotten feedback from their peers on include, what can we be doing better to help you feel safe in our schools? What types of things should we be considering when we're talking about our branding? What types of courses would you like us to be considering for the future? And those facilitators came to some training at the beginning of the year. And then I give them topics in a facilitation guide and they just go do their thing, either during lunches or in classrooms or in study halls. And we're learning how to best get feedback from students, but I think it's been a really good experience for students to be giving their peers feedback. So I'm really grateful for them. I'm gonna let them just really briefly here tell you their name, what grade they're in, and then one or two things that they're involved within the school or love about the school, or maybe some classes that they really enjoy. Is that okay? You wanna go first, Jacob?
I'm Jacob Polakunil. I'm right here, the board member. So what I like about this school? Uh, it's wonderful. I'm in theater, as some of you may know. I'm in theater, Scratch Paper. Uh, it's wonderful. There's so many opportunities, so many resources. And yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name is Brock Seller. I'm a sophomore, tenth grade. A few things I like about the school is a wide variety of things that we can do that are fun, educational, and just great time doing. I'm part of the principal leadership team and the school improvement team.
Hello, my name is Inia Saravanen. I'm a sophomore and I'm in, I'm involved in Science Olympiad and Scholastic Bowl.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I just wanna say I'm Justnitzie Jimenez, I'm a senior at this school. And what I do like to dabble in is just a lot of cultural organizations. I feel like that's very important to keep our representation alive. And a few courses I love, I love science courses. That's all.
Hi, my name is Annika Youngman. I'm a senior here at Warren. What I love about Warren is the activities that form relationships for students here and, yeah, and then I'm involved in varsity basketball and varsity golf here, as well as the student athlete leadership team. And my favorite class is AP Literature.
Hi, my name is Zoe Adedegi. I am a junior and I am involved in theater, student council, and track and field. I really love the people in the school. I love the community that they've built in their like own little circles and how they all interact with each other. Yeah.
Hello, my name is Darma Kada. I like to go by Max. I am a senior at Warren. Not well involved in many things except like student focus group. That's about it.
Hi, guys. You already know me. I'm Anya Polansky. I'm involved in a lot here at Warren. I think there's about eight clubs I'm in. But some of my main involvements are Students of Service Oak Plain, I'm the president, and Mother Earth Concerned Students Oak Plain, I'm also the president. I also am very involved in Future Business Leaders of America where I'm the historian. Our competition is now coming up, so I'm really excited. And something I love about Warren are definitely the teachers. I feel like they find a way to make class engaging no matter how boring the lesson is on whatever notes we're doing. I feel like they're definitely an integral part of our school and I really appreciate them for it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessica Castor. I'm a senior here at Warren. You might have seen me on Scratch Paper. I really love the diversity in types of people in the school. I've never seen a dull moment where a student is left out. At least everybody's trying to be included in many ways as possible.
Let's give these kids a hand. When some of these faces you did see, you've seen this year a handful of times because of board meetings, but also some were involved last year with our strategic planning efforts, which was really our first attempt to try to use students as facilitators to get student voice in some of our decision-making. And a big, I think, big theme from last year that was, made me think differently about how we do things, and the board really pushed me to like lean into this idea, was that when we would talk to students, when the students would talk to themselves or each other about our inclusion, equity, and diversity priorities, a consistent theme was, let us be involved in the decisions. We want to have voice. And I think something that I'm learning about organizations is to get better at acknowledging different viewpoints. It's really important to let people be at the table when you're making decisions. And I'm really proud of this group and they're helping us make sure we got the right people at the table for those decisions. So thank you very much. Appreciate your work. And I told them they could leave after this because they would probably be bored otherwise, except for a couple of them. But thank you again. Thank you, parents.
Students, I just wanna thank you again. I know for a lot of you, this is probably the first time you've been in front of the board, but rest assured, we hear about your efforts all the time. Danny is a big proponent of everything you guys work on and we appreciate you guys very much. And we appreciate your, your voice. We like hearing the students' perspective on things to help us make decisions. So thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Next up on the agenda is our public comment. Most of the public has just left the building. But if anybody would like to address the board, they're more than welcome to. Address the podium. Just state your name and you have a couple minutes to talk about whatever's on your mind. Just move forward. Next up are committee reports. It's really just the finance committee report.
We don't have anything to add. Sorry.
I was about to say, any questions on the finance report? If not, let's move on to the superintendent's report.
I don't think I have anything specific to add, other than that's what's submitted. But if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Our students actually might have a couple thoughts, so. But if there are any questions first, I can take those from the board.
No, by all means, the students should come first.
Okay, I know.
Then we can formulate our questions.
Yeah, when I, when I met with the students today, there were a couple points they wanted to make sure got brought up. So we'll throw the, the mic over to them.
Yeah, so sorry that I'm taking my phone out. I have all my notes on my phone. But.
Rules against cell phones out in school.
I'm so sorry. I don't do it during school, okay? I promise. So I actually went around this week and I asked my teachers and my friends just some thoughts on what they thought we could do to improve the school. And I saw some trends in everyone's answers. One of the biggest issues that students and teachers alike want to bring light on is the vaping issue. It is still, still very much so an issue. A lot of students are actually really uncomfortable in using the bathrooms at schools because of the vaping problem. I know it is also a health concern for some students because secondhand smoke is still a thing and they just don't feel comfortable with it. And since it is such a big issue, a lot of students and, the students are worried to go in there. They're worried for their fellow classmates, for their health. The teachers don't know what they can do to help or how they can alleviate the situation. And so I think that this just needs to be brought up to the board because it is really an issue in our school. And I feel like more people need to be aware of how much it is affecting the students. I personally am worried for everyone's health and I just wanna make sure that everyone is getting the help that they need, especially in the social emotional side of things. But yeah, that is one of the main issues that a lot of people have been addressing. The vaping problem in the bathrooms is quite bad. On that note, it is not very cleanly in the bathroom and we do need to work on our cleanliness there. And in general, also people have been, it's been a distraction, distraction of people skipping classes. Sometimes you will see students pass by your classroom and they will be looking inside of your classroom to see who's in there. And it just takes away from the moment of the lesson. And I am here in school to learn and it is distracting for me, it is distracting for my fellow students when there are just people in the hallway and you can tell they're skipping class because they don't have a pass or anything. And they're just, you know, taking away from your moment and being in your lesson. So I think that there's also an issue, a lot of the teachers brought up with skipping classes, just tardinesses in general. A lot of students are being tardy and it's really difficult for them to catch up on their work because at that point they have to make up a lot of quizzes or tests or assignments. And it almost takes away from being them in that lesson that they're at at that point. So teachers have a hard time catching students up and it's almost as if they're doing the work on their own, which they don't know what they can do to help with that because it is kind of a problem with how many students are just not showing up to school and the attendance policies and everything. So I just wanted to bring you guys attention to that. A lot of the students and staff alike, but mostly the students have been mentioning that the HVAC system, the heaters, they're pretty inconsistent. In each classroom, you don't know if you're going to be wearing short sleeves or if you should have your winter coat on. So I don't know if there, if there's a plan to maybe fix some issues with that, but I know the students, it's just a little inconsistent and it can be a little frustrating when you're in school seven or eight hours a day and you just don't know what, how to dress properly. And there have been issues in the past with that, especially when the weather changes outside. So I think if we could have a little bit of emphasis on that, that would be really great. And my final thing, students have mentioned that they would like some longer lunch periods. We have about twenty minutes to eat. And statistically speaking, it is not necessarily good for you to eat in such a short amount of time. And a lot of students just feel they don't have enough time to eat their full lunch, that maybe their parents packed for them or also with the long lunch lines. It's very difficult to eat in an even short amount of time if you have to go and get your lunch. So I'm not exactly sure what we can do about that, but I just wanted to let you guys know that that is something that the students were focusing on. Longer lunch periods sound very nice to me, even though I do like the half-study hall. I think that it could be helpful for us to have a little more time to socialize and to breathe and just eat our lunch as slowly as we want. And then I did also bring up a couple other points to Dr. Danny, which I will not be bringing up to you guys because it's just, I talked with him about it. But some of those points were the field trips, security guards, the field house, and the activity bus. So if you want more information on that, you can always ask him. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask, are you gonna ask?
Go ahead. I'll go. I'll just break the tie. So got a question for you. You brought it up first because you said on your last one, not sure what we can do about it, but you brought it up. Very first topic, vaping. We've discussed that a couple times. A lot of topics, same conversations you've had. I mean, uncomfortable going to the bathroom. You can't put cameras in there. It's, it's just a difficult situation. Any thoughts on what we can do about that situation?
So I actually did ask students about that as well because I know we have.
Feel like I teed you up for that question.
No, yes, exactly. No, I have asked students about that. And I think honestly what we found to maybe just be the most helpful is having more routine checks in bathrooms by security guards. Because I feel like the students would not be as inclined to go into those bathrooms and vape or, you know, smoke weed or something if, if there are security guards that routinely check them. That is, I don't really necessarily know what we could do about that, but I also think recognizing patterns for students that are constantly missing in class might be able to help find the people who are struggling with substances and just helping them as well. I just would say definitely more routine checks on the bathrooms and noticing, especially when there's like smoke coming out of stalls because sometimes it is very obvious and there's no one there to actually check on it, so.
I just wanted to respond to your comments because I've had these discussions several times with people in this room. And I was overwhelmed by the exact number of bathrooms between the two schools. I don't know if we have that number anymore on the top of our head, but it is overwhelming, the number of bathrooms and the number of security guards to be able to walk into a good percentage of those bathrooms during a passing period is statistically almost impossible. Like I've done the math. And so it is a huge problem because yes, it would be great to say they should check them more frequently, but you would need an army, from the numbers that I remember. You would need an army to be able to check the bathrooms during passing periods to cover a decent amount of them. It's, it's just an overwhelming number of bathrooms in these buildings. I don't even know, I don't remember what it is. I don't know if anyone remembers what it is, but it's crazy. And then the other thing, I do know, just because I've had this conversation, that there is a system in place to check people that go out on pass. Because you, don't you guys have to sign out in an app?
An e-hall pass, yeah.
E-hall pass, thank you. Like if you need to go to the bathroom during, and you can't go more than X amount of times, is that?
It's not necessarily an amount of times. It's, you can't go during the first ten min, ten minutes of class and the last ten minutes of class, but.
But I'm guessing, and I could be correct if I'm wrong, but the information I remember, I believe, is that if you're trying to check out every class or period, which I'm sure you're not, you would find it unavailable that you can't do that. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, there are some limits on.
There are some limits on the number of times you can go. So just to like, just so you know, I've had these conversations. And short of, you know, staffing an army of security for passing periods, and I've even, I've even brought up the fact of teachers popping in and got feedback from teachers, well, when do they go to the bathroom? Or when do they prepare for the next class or whatever? So it, it's a big, it's a big problem to address. And there are some things that have been discussed, but there's logistical reasons and then there's other things in place. So I mean, it might be a fun thing to get a team of students together to.
It's a good idea.
Um, I did wanna say though, there is one bathroom, at least at the Oak Plain campus. I'm not sure about the Almond campus.
You don't have to share it here.
There is one bathroom that is like known as the vaping and smoking bathroom. It is the one by the lunchroom, so that is, I mean, if they could even more routinely check that one bathroom, I feel like that would also be helpful.
You get my attention when you brought up lunch. Seriously, though.
His favorite subject.
I could understand. I mean, if you have to wait in line for ten minutes, you gotta gobble your whatever in ten minutes. What do you, what would be your, would it, if it would be an option that you get rid of that other twenty-minute, half-period study hall, the forty-minute lunch? What, how would be your response to that?
Or extend the school day?
What do you think everybody else, well, yeah. But what do you think your response would be? What do you think the student body's response would be?
I think a lot of them would appreciate the longer lunch period because truth be told, not everyone actually does their work during that study hall time and they.
Sit down in twenty minutes and really nail it, you know?
Yeah, so it's, the issue is not exactly that. It's, I mean, I, I'm in Future Business Leaders of America during my half-study hall. So I like that we have an outlet to that club there and we can work on our projects. However possibly we could make it optional, because I think a lot of students would, instead of having to sit in a study hall, rather take some time and just socialize with their friends and take a longer lunch. But those students who feel that they need that study hall or that FBLA or student council period and they can eat in twenty minutes, I feel like that would be quite helpful for them too. So perhaps making it an option would be better because I feel like a lot of the student body would be happier with that. I'm not sure though.
Because we do have resource tables available during the lunch study hall too, so that would cut into some of that possibly, so.
Quick, I think we had hall monitors. Do we have hall monitors? Anybody sit up at a desk and monitor the hall?
That, we now call them security guards. That is basically the old school hall monitor.
These were students that sat up with a.
Oh, no, we don't have those.
Okay.
That's interesting, yeah. Kind of like you had student crossing guards, right? You got like some.
Yeah, we had patrol fells.
Not sure who would volunteer to be the ones sitting there, but.
That's true.
So I would, I was, I was just gonna make a simple comment. If you take vaping out of the washroom equation, there's all kinds of things that probably happen in the washroom. I'm also gonna guess that e-hall pass isn't needed during passing periods, correct?
No, it is not.
Right. So I would encourage you, as you talk to your fellow students, to ask them what they think would solve the problem and come back with some ideas because the only way to beat students is with other students. So, because we, you know, I'm sure all of your teachers and administrators have probably talked at nauseam about how to solve this, but if you could tap into your student, other students, and then provide that information, it would be really helpful. So someone had mentioned a student committee or whatever. It doesn't even have, it could even just be informal conversations. And then if you didn't feel comfortable sharing it at an open forum like this, even just reporting it back to Dr. Danny in confidence and, you know, it, it, we can discuss these things and try to help. I recognize it's a problem. I've talked to my own kids who avoid the washroom. So I think it's, you're gonna, it's hard to find someone that disagrees, like it's an issue, just not quite sure how to solve it. So if you could do some.
Yeah, and I've asked around. It's just students also just don't really know how to alleviate it other than really more routine checks.
Thus, the problem continues.
Yes, exactly.
I really appreciate Anya coming with just some intel for the school board and representing some different perspectives here today. It's really important. I don't have anything else to add.
Jacob, you have anything to add down there?
No, I think she did a pretty good job explaining it all.
Cut back the following.
It was all-inclusive.
Check.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, moving forward, we're gonna go on to the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes personnel recommendations per Exhibit A, numbers eighty-eight through ninety-five, as posted, and athletics, activities, and volunteer personnel recommendations per Exhibit B, numbers B two-four-six through B two-four-nine, as posted, the two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-eight superintendent's contract, payment of the bills dated March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, in the amount of five million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifteen cents, regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, one-year contract extension for the photography services for student athletic photos with visual, can't even talk anymore, visual image photography, Inc., for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and the membership renewal for the Illinois High School Association for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Pope. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Onto discussion items. We're gonna talk about the staffing strategy.
Yeah, I would like to take a couple minutes if I could and walk through how we make staffing decisions. I think that's important this year and probably for the next few years. Then typically I would come in probably April, maybe May, but hopefully April with a staffing plan for next year. So if I say anything now that makes you feel uncomfortable or is a red flag, let's talk through it now so that I can make sure I address that in any staffing plan proposals that I come back with next month. So just to set the context, I think it's important that we take ourselves back to a couple years ago when we were having conversations about asking our community for additional funds. We made commitments around these four areas really specifically. Preserving the eight-period day, improving academic support and mental health services, restoring and protecting activities and clubs, restoring and protecting athletics. The reason I think that's important is because the narrative around referendums often starts to, and ours has, expand and assumed or hoped for scope. So when people talk about great things that we could be doing as a school district, even if it had nothing to do with conversations that we had a couple years ago, they'll say, well, we have them, we have more money now. This is a great opportunity to X, Y, Z. So I just am putting that up as context around, these are really the four things that we committed to doing. And most of those are preservation commitments. So there is an improving, which would be adding services, but most of that is preservation. And I think that's important over the next couple years. So last year, just as a reminder, we did add approximately thirty positions. About twenty-four of these are teaching staff, classified class, uh, support staff for students. We did have a handful of administrative positions that are working with students on a regular basis. Many of these focused on improving mental health support services. There were some, but fewer allocated towards specific academic supports. But we know moving forward that students are still exhibiting academic needs. Those exist. We know that there are certain types of academic supports that we used to offer that we haven't been able to pick back up. I think it's important to note that we will, we have retirement letters in hand for forty, a little bit over forty staff members over the next three years. So in Illinois, it's generally a practice to turn in a retirement letter two to four years ahead of time. So we know we're going to separate from these forty individuals over the next three years. And we'll probably have some level of enrollment decline. Who knows how much that will be? But every, every estimate I've seen has us declining for the next three to four years and then we level off. Sometimes that level off is a little bit higher or a little bit lower, but general, generally we'll probably level off in the next three to four years. So when we're, when we're going through this as administrators, as a school district, we give students an opportunity around January to pick classes. Then in February, we take all those classes that were submitted and put them into a big, what we call master tally list. And it's just the idea of like, how many check marks does each class have next to it? So a core class like freshman English is gonna have a few hundred tally marks next to it. A really specific class like maybe a three, theater four might only have a handful. And that helps us during the months of February and March, start to schedule. It's a big jigsaw puzzle. At high schools, we're a large high school, two large campuses. Um, at high schools, we're a large high school, two large campuses, so you gotta try to figure out all these different requests with the staffing that you have uh during an eight-period day. It's just a big puzzle. It's a lot of fun uh to try to put together. We do have some board policy on class size guidelines, and so we use those as we're slotting students into the sections. Uh, and then in April, we try to come to you with a plan. Here's an example of what your board policy looks like for us around class sizes. So for each subject, there's a suggested range and a class size goal. A couple of things that are important about this, the way that we interpret it as an administrative team, is that uh generally there's kinda different approaches here, so uh core classes, English, social studies, and math will generally look the same, so you'll have a range of eighteen to thirty and a class size goal of twenty-five. Science is a little bit different because they have lab space. Uh, then you'll see things like uh PE or choir have larger ranges and class size goals and, but then something like industrial tech will have a smaller class size uh range and target. So generally, the way that we're approaching this is we need to stay within our ranges. And if we're working towards a class size goal, but we need to stay within the ranges. And as a team, if we um, actually, let me go to the next example. So as a team, we're looking at the requests that come in from students and we're trying to match that with the number of staff that we have and the known positions that we have for next year. Um, sometimes, and it'll happen more often over the next few years, we'll have natural attrition. And we like to lean into natural attrition more than having to forcefully separate from employees. It helps with morale. Um, uh, it's good for staff members to know that they have a home here, that they're part of our family, and so as much as a school district can lean into that natural attrition, the healthier we are as an organization, so. In this example, this year, we might have three teachers in the green department and five teachers in the blue department, and that works really well for us. Um, four, did I count wrong?
You said three.
Got it. Four green teachers, five blue teachers. Thank you. Yeah, that's ma- So maybe we have a, a teacher in the green department that's retiring this year. Um, we won't necessarily, with declining enrollment, replace that teacher in the green department. We might choose to not replace that teacher because we don't have as many students and we don't need as many teachers uh on a day-to-day basis anywhere. Or we might say, hey, we've got an increase in interest uh in the blue department classes. So maybe it's like a career preparation classes, and there's a lot more interest nowadays with career preparatory classes by students. So we might take that position and reallocate it towards the blue department. So generally speaking, um, if we have a teacher that's leaving and when we are doing the sectioning, we're able to stay within that suggested range without replacing the teacher, we'll try to not replace the teacher. That gives us an opportunity to reallocate where needs might be in a different place. Um, we might not have in any given year needs that we can, that we'll suck that position into, uh, and that might, that would be an opportunity where we're just naturally declining in uh staffing. Let's see, for the most part, um, if we're able to either stay level or go down in staffing, my assumption between, you know, January to April is that the board's gonna be probably comfortable with that. But what I'll come to you around now, every ye- year is, hey, this is what I think we're looking at. Um, where I will need to make sure I'm really directly communicating and need the specific feedback on is when we come to you with specific requests to add staff or add uh to our overall staffing count. So we're pretty confident that we can uh stay at least staff-neutral. What we're trying to look at right now is if we can, uh, with some of the retirements that we had this last year, if we're able to add resources next year while staying staff-neutral. So when we look at our priority list right now, um, academic supports or academic interventions are on the top of our priority list. Uh, some way, somehow coordinating that and having a little bit more oversight on the interventions and the data analysis for the interventions would be a priority. We do have in our new teacher evaluation plan a really specific role for instructional coaches, which are coaches for adults, uh, to support adults in their teaching uh skills. Over the next few years, as we hire a lot, we have a lot of new staff, and as we continue to hire a lot of new staff, that's something that we as an organization haven't had and don't have a lot of muscle around. And so making sure that we've got resources to support uh new staff is gonna be really important, and an instructional coach can help with that.
Hey, could I interrupt you on that one?
Yes, yes, please.
Most, most high school districts do have instructal- instructional coaches, don't they?
That is where most schools in general have moved to in the last ten years.
I thought I've understood, so I'm surprised we haven't had any, but not surprised.
We do have a, we do have part, we do have one person that is part-time instructional coach. Uh, he teaches math for part of his day, and then he provides some really minimum instructional coach services. It is a model that's used uh pretty heavily now. Um, we probably have some conversations around uh someone in the special department to help with our outplacement services and coordinate that and um pay more attention to that than we have in the past. That was part of the special ed audit uh and some staffing considerations that that special ed audit gave us. Um, we continue to grow in our EL population and the needs that they have, um, and have right now. Um, a lot of students that uh qualify both for special ed, outplacement services, and EL services. And so there's some needs there that we're still trying to figure out how do we address appropriately, and we might need to continue to add, or we might need to continue thinking about adding to our multilingual staff. Chris Geo Karas has brought up a couple times over the last year, just the idea of someone that can um help us with our career pathway support. If we want to bring that up to a different level than what we're able to allocate energy towards now. There's a continued increase in five oh four plans, which isn't quite like an IEP, but has some similar traits to an IEP. Right now, our counselors manage our five oh four coordination. Um, continuing to figure out how we can get some bilingual staff um at both of our buildings and helping out with our library supervision. This is kind of like our we're not gonna get to most of this, but um if we did have ten or twelve positions that opened up and we're like, what, what should we do with these ten or twelve opportunities? This is probably where we would start. We start the top of the list and move our way down. I think that's, so that's kinda how we are thinking about going into it. We're really right now focused on trying to figure out how can we provide these academic supports during lunchtime for all students in our core areas. Um, so if a student during lunch needs extra help for math, English, social studies, or science, is there a way that we can, with our current staffing model, um, figure out how to provide that type of support academically next year? For Oakley, it's during the twenty minutes. Um, at Almond, it's long, it's, it's longer, but yeah, yep. Um, and I think the model that we're most focused on is a, a period of time, so it's not, hey, you gotta go to uh the math support room tomorrow. It's, hey, you've got four weeks. Uh, you're gonna go to that math support room every day for the next four weeks, and you might only be able to get this much done every day. But going consistently for a period of time, uh, sh- we're hoping will help.
Any of the um lists that we're looking at right now, are they in order of priority?
I think they are, yeah.
Curious, uh, the five oh four coordinator, I was, is I, just as the basic understanding of I have some of these items, I was wondering why that wasn't a little higher, maybe?
Yeah, that's great. This is the type of feedback I'm looking for.
Somebody tell me what a five oh four coordinator is.
So, Mr. Carlson, if um, if I break my leg and I need to be able to use, I need to get out of class a little bit early, use the elevator, and then should be allowed to come to class a little bit late. That's an easy example. If I need a five oh four plan, it's like, it's a certain law, that's like law five oh four, statute five oh four. But it also involves any type of short or long-term disability that might not qualify for a really high intensive level of services through special education.
I'm just thinking of our audit more recently, and that's gonna be a lot of, you know, heavy lifting, things like that, and prioritizing some of that. That, these efforts here, I would think, would be a little bit higher on the list, in my opinion, but I could, I'm open to argument, you know, or discussion, I'm just saying.
Yeah, so I, what I'm interpreting is that you're thinking maybe that's higher up, closer to the special ed outplacement support, that makes sense. I do think that we're like a year away from being able to propose a complete restructure of special ed, if we're gonna do that.
So if you consider timing, I can-
It could be a timing issue.
Yeah.
I don't, I think what, what you're pushing me on, though, is I don't know if I've seen the five oh four coordinator position as part of the special education conversation, and I appreciate that nudge. I think that's a good nudge.
I have a couple questions. What, it's, I've never done this before. Forty people being on the path towards retirement is an unusual, it's more than average? Is that average?
It's definitely more than average for us for the last five to ten years, yeah.
Roughly, what's our total staff?
So that'll be around ten percent of our staff.
Okay. Um, library supervision, t- t- talk about that.
Yeah, I might need Pat to come up and supplement me on this, or Gio, if you guys could come up and help me on library supervision. I don't think we have a full-time library su- uh certified person at both buildings all day.
We, we do not. So one of the reductions that we made, um, as we were reducing staff, as we're in, uh, when we were having financial challenges, was reducing by one librarian, so currently we have one librarian on staff who splits her time between both buildings. So there are days where the Almond library camp, Almond Campus Library is closed, and there's days when the Oakley Library Campus, or the Oakley Campus Library is closed because we only have one person. Sometimes we're able to staff it with some technology department help. Uh, but it's, um, we're not able to provide like full uh media center services for students um at both campuses every day of the week.
Are they still coming to get a book?
Um, yes, most of the time, yes, but there are, there are occasions where like it is closed because we do not have staffing.
And so what are students not able to do that they would be able to do if there were someone there?
So our libraries, like, I don't know that kids are necessarily coming in to check out books, so if you guys wanna talk about how you've used the library, that'd be great.
I was gonna ask.
Yeah, uh, do you wanna go?
Uh, usually the libraries are used as like study halls, or like just a time to like hang out. And yeah, you can use just browse out books and stuff, but yeah, mainly it's like a space to hang out and like use as a study hall.
Yeah, I don't really see students uh checking out books very often, because if you wanted to check out books, I mean, there's Warren Newport Public Library very close by. Um, but I would definitely say it's like for study hall students. Uh, if you wanna do group work or if you wanna talk with your friends, instead of going to your study hall, you go to the library and you socialize there.
And our librarian does a fantastic job with having activities and different things for the kids to do uh in the library and like challenges and things that she's running all the time to engage kids in the building of culture and an expectation uh in that space.
Chris, I've seen sometimes librarians are able to provide some more direct support for classes, so they might be running seminars for English classes, and I'm guessing that's probably difficult to do in a-
Yes, so like if we're, we hit seasons where there's a lot of research papers due and where kids need to learn, librarians are very uh like helpful. Here's how you do research. Here's how we would go find these resources. Here's how you would cite these resources and going into classes and helping kids understand how to work these systems um and how to do those things, so she's spread very fit- thin at those times because she might have to do that over at Almond, but there's still need at Oakley, so there is an impact on instruction. Uh, and then also with like helping to run trainings for teachers, like here's the new things that are coming out and how kids can research things. And here's how, like, the other resources that the library has and the, uh, for kids to utilize to help in their studies.
I'm guessing that most of the support we're not seeing by having only one librarian is happening not necessarily, like students aren't necessarily seeing that when they look behind the desk. It's gonna be more that backend support for teachers.
So I know today, um, I was with um our librarian and she was talking with the instructional coach about what can we do to help uh teachers learn about some of the AI things that are starting to appear in the web apps that our teachers are utilizing in class. So with one librarian, it's much harder to start to get those presentations scheduled and get out to teachers and departments and PLTs to train them on what's, what's starting to emerge and what they have access to. It takes, obviously takes twice as long uh with only one person trying to do that and balancing that across campuses.
So, uh, it sounds like our library spaces are used more as common areas, study halls. So I'm not gonna address that, cuz I like, um, I like it when we place people for what they're, like, I'm not sure a certified infor- library information specialist should be just supervising kids. So I wanna, like, maybe there's a way at a lower cost point, if there, if it's a supervision issue, maybe there's a different way to fill that need. So I'm just gonna quickly ask, i- and uh have we ever talked to the Warren Newport Public Library? I'm big into being creative, um, many times, and you don't have to answer this now, but it might be a good question to go back and talk to them, but many times, they're sitting on library information specialist during the day, not a lot of people coming in, low utilization. We're sitting on the students who have needs sitting here. So they're either a school liaison librarian or a cost share, split salary fifty-fifty, and half the time they're here, half the time they're there. Courtesy, if we know that research happens cyclical around certain times, maybe they, at no cost, would be willing to staff their librarians here during certain days, during certain hours, limited time basis. A lot of research, I believe, is done via online databases anyway, cuz I'm looking around at the number of physical books for two thousand kids, and it's not adding up to me. So like, I don't think the physical books need to be here in order to get our students the supports they need to help write their papers. So it could just be a bridge, and there could be creative ways to partner, I guess is the part that I'm gonna suggest maybe Dr. Danny and you guys take back is, I love it when taxing bodies work together and solve common issues. This could be one of those. So I threw out some ideas, they may or may not work, but it's food for thought.
Good idea, Tony.
I also, I'm gonna throw one more in there. Um, all these Chromebooks that we have, maybe we're already doing this, um, eBooks. Uh, if we don't subscribe to any kind of eBook um platform, do we, or don't we?
Um, I think we have some subscriptions. I'm not exactly sure off the top of my head what exactly what subscriptions we actually have.
So if you uh subscribe to Sora, I'm gonna give you an example. You can sign, and uh most public libraries in Illinois use the same system for eBooks under a different name. You can sign an agreement with that company to have students check out public library books from their school-based devices. I know a few districts that are doing this. It's, the library has to agree to it. It's an extra document that you sign, but um you know, one thing that could come out of that discussion that you guys maybe have with them is uh how could we find a way to have our students, where every kid has a device, to be able to check out eBooks that you may have in your collection, but nobody's checking out? Like, again, there could be a win-win there. And I do know you can authenticate by domain, so if it sees it coming from a uh Warren email address, it would just, without a patron ID, you can check out books. So there is a bridge there with the company Sora, with the public library. So just giving you some nuggets to start conversations with, could be some low-hanging fruit that can be achieved possibly, as we're talking about just the library part here.
Absolutely. We'll definitely look into that.
While you're there, uh, could I just make sure I'm clear on intervention coordinators? Which interventions are we describing on that one there?
Yeah, so the priority, the priority would be those four core areas. So if we're running math intervention supports during lunch, we would make sure that we've got somebody that can manage that, make sure students are being assigned, follow the students, pull them out once they start succeeding. I think the next level of that would be a conversation around should we have someone who's overseeing what we would call tier-one or basic level support services for all students? Um, there are a bajillion, what I would call tier-one or base-level um programs or activities for students to be involved in here. Uh, but we, I think as an organization, struggle, first of all, knowing what all those are, making sure everybody knows what all those are and identifying how we can lift those up. A lot of times as an organization, what we've done is, without uh systemic understanding of all the things that are happening, and we keep adding to. Um, and we just need to pay a little bit more attention to that too, so I think there's two aspects of that.
Special ed outplacement support, who's being outplaced and where, how?
Yeah, so we um have a, a good number of special education students who receive service- Yeah, so we, um, have a, a good number of special education students who receive services from either the co-op here next door to us or from maybe a whole nother entity because the, the services that they need are so specific, we're not able, or have chosen not to, um, provide that service within our walls.
Case outplacement is finding services.
Finding this, yeah, they get bused to a different school and they go to school there every day.
Thank you.
Any red flags that came up here, concerns, I appreciate the feedback around maybe rethinking that five oh four coordinator?
Yeah, and, uh, just the, the career pathway support, I know that that, that timeline is out there a little further. I think on a priority for me, I mean, we do have a lot of things in place and I know that there are mandates that we need to adjust to, but a lot of these discussions that we're having right now are, in my head, much more significant to prioritize than, um, support in my head, you know, and again, I can have that discussion, but a lot of this is thing, or a lot of these items are things that we're just, I feel, I don't wanna say deficient in, but like, we need to bring forward and career pathway support is something we're already forward on, that we're gonna push forward more, so.
Okay.
That's my head, that's the way I'm seeing it.
Yeah.
There's no red flags here. I, I mean, it, my, the answer's gonna depend on who you ask and you and your team are gonna know what's needed more than we would. But I appreciate, um, the focus on the academics in the first three items that I see there because our core mission is to educate students. So paying attention to the, some of the interventions, also keeping tabs on the tier one. I've always thought like the career pathway piece, like our post-secondary counselors could be crucial in that, so maybe there's an opportunity there. I know that everyone's stretched thin, but potentially they could be a good partner in that. But, um, yeah, I, I don't wanna lose focus. At the end of the day, we're an educational institution charged with teaching kids, so I, we've done a lot with SCL over the last couple of years, time will tell whether that has payoff, but I appreciate the focus on the academic supports as well. I see no red flags.
Okay, that's all I have.
Hey, um, I appreciate you starting off with the slide on the referendum and what we, uh, said we were going to do to start off with. I know that's a topic we talked about a couple of weeks ago at a meeting that everything we should talk about, we should bring back to, what's the purpose and what's the guiding direction for that, so that was appreciated. Anything else? If not, let's move on to action items. The first one is an approval of non-reemployment of long-term substitute positions. This is an annual topic. Could you give us just like a, a ten-second snippet of what this is about?
Um, yeah, so if a staff member is leaving for an extended period of time due to personal reasons, we employ a long-term substitute and they're here long enough that we need to, in some ways, treat them the same way as a permanent teacher. So we just gotta give them notice that we're not gonna hire them back next year.
Questions? If not, I move to approve the resolution for the non-reemployment of long-term substitute teachers as presented. Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Pope, Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we're looking for approval for two new appendix B positions. Any questions on what's in here?
Questions, I, if Danny wants to, Dr. Reese wants to kinda give an overview, it's fine.
Sure.
But I do have some questions about it.
Yeah, so a quick overview would be on an annual basis, we sit down with, um, members of what's called the appendix B committee. Appendix B in the contract with the union outlines all of the stipend positions for athletic coaches, club advisors. Um, and we look with the union on an annual basis to see if there are any, we negotiate with the union any changes to that list in appendix B. There are two positions here, uh, for proposal, uh, from us tonight.
I did read the proposal and I did have a number of questions, which I would probably just summarize as, um, I'm a little confused by the proposal and what's been, what is the current situation, what is changing and what the new situation would entail.
Got it, okay.
And so, um, I can either submit, uh, questions or try and ask for clarification. I don't think we have anyone from the department that would be here to answer them, but I think there's enough questions in my head regarding the requests for the positions that I'm just not clear on what, what's really being asked, what's changing, how it's changing and what is exactly going on in the proposal.
Okay, that's probably my fault, then we can do a better job summarizing. Maybe Dr. Keely, could you come up and? So, uh, the proposal, we'll kinda give an overview and then maybe we can come back with it next month if there's some specific questions we can work through. Let's see, so we're specifically requesting, uh, that we add two positions to the list, they are color guard assistant directors. I am not exactly sure how this compares with what we've had in this past, maybe Dr. Keely can give us a little bit of overview, as much as you can. We're, we'll come back next month for sure, anything else, anything you can provide tonight would be great.
Uh, just like Dr. Reese said, every year, this is an annual process. We haven't filled our appendix B position in quite a long time, we, so we've been reallocating positions. Um, we have reali- we're down to just not having one position hired. Um, this year we did have, uh, a significant number of requests come in for appendix B proposals, it was actually twenty-two if I'm not mistaken.
Are these pre-referendum, or pre-referendum RIF quote-unquote positions?
We didn't cut any positions.
You didn't cut any positions, so these didn't exist?
These are all, this is all new positions, anything that comes from a appendix B is brand new. We sometimes reallocate a position, uh, giving, like, ski club wasn't filled for two or three years, no one applied for it.
Okay.
Um, so as a result, we reallocated that ski club stipend at the same amount to someone who put it in a proposal. Like, that seems great, they have a lot of kids that are interested, it seems like a sustainable club, let's reallocate it, budget neutral. So that's how we've been going about it, 'cause we haven't filled our positions. We have, we did a little bit hiring last year, you get some younger, newer staff, they typically will be more inclined to do some extracurricular activities. That's pretty normal in most schools. So again, this year when we got the proposals, we got twenty-two, twenty-two proposals came to the committee and two came forward. Now, I know the proposal you were asking for, there were several asked inside of there, but only two of the ones inside of there met a threshold to move forward.
And these two that, that did meet the threshold, they never existed before, correct? So these are, these are not like positions we lost prior to the referendum that they're, we're backfilling now, right?
We never cut any appendix B positions.
Got you.
Anything we add here is an improvement?
Anything is appendix B when they come, unless we're reallocating, which we wouldn't come to if we were reallocating a position. It's always brand-new positions, addition to the contract.
I, I wasn't getting a clear, I, I just, I don't think I was getting a real clear vision as to what, was there something changing that was requiring more supervision or need for these positions? What, what is the catalyst for request in the positions is what I was trying to gather.
Essentially, the two coaches that do the winter guard were also doing the fall. So they're looking for separate stipends for the fall.
And where they do, they are doing the fall right now, there's just.
Been doing the fall.
They've been doing the fall.
Been doing the fall.
I can definitely go back and I, I think there's not necessarily a timeliness to this.
No, we have time.
We can go back and, um, maybe hear some of the misstep on my end as I just included for you to review what, uh, the committee brought to the committee meeting and I can do a better job at re, um, resummarizing that in a clearer way for the board, that's not necessarily working through this on a regular basis, some of these staffing. And then if you have a list of questions, Mrs. Pope, I can try to get those answered here in the next month.
That'd be great, thanks.
If the board doesn't wanna act on it tonight, which is fine.
I'm all for passing. Yep. Next up is an approval of a diversity consultant. You wanna give a quick summary of this, Dan?
Yeah, there are two of these, the first one is with an organization out of Indiana, uh, that's providing professional development support. Ms. Squires is on the team, uh, that's getting specific support from them, some training around goal-setting and action planning with a diversity lens. That organization is, um, funded from, it's a federally funded program, so there's no direct cost to us other than sending people down. Uh, the second one is, uh, for a local consultant, uh, to work with our DEI committee on their goal-setting process and an audit of our practices and policies and procedures. Uh, both of these are coming out of the diversity committee, um, have been vetted by the diversity committee and, uh, one of our goals this year for the strategic plan is to engage in the start of an equity audit.
That cost seemed high.
Yeah, thirty-two thousand.
I, I know nothing of the quality, I wasn't involved, I don't wanna, like, if it went through a committee, who am I to stop that? But it, did, did, just from a board level and watching finances, did that cost seem higher than you would have anticipated or is that par for the course?
I think that's par for the course, the hourly rate there, I think, is, um, pretty reasonable as far as an hourly rate is concerned. So if they end up spending less time on things, that might make, um, the rate go down.
Sure, I know what the right rate is, but I just saw a subtotal.
Sure, so, yeah, the hourly rate is on page, the hourly rate is on page eight of the MSM contract. It's two hundred and forty dollars an hour.
I'm on the diversity committee and I know, we talked to several consulting firms and all of them were in this ballpark.
We're in the ballpark, that's what I'm, I'm missing context.
Thanks for explaining that.
And some with less flexibility to do what we needed as opposed to a kind of a, more of a standardized approach.
Yeah, this one did stand out in terms of it being separate pieces and if we decide we don't need that piece or we want a different piece, we have flexibility to do that, yeah.
So if you could help me out then, what, what are we gonna, what's the takeaway from this, what are we gonna get from this thirty-two thousand dollars?
Do you want me to take that or do one of you wanna take it? So MSM is doing a couple of things, I'd probably put it in the buckets of, they're gonna do a review of our policies, they're gonna come in and help us. So that's the first thing, they spend time reviewing the policies. They're going to, uh, provide some technical support to the DEI committee, uh, be at some of those meetings, help them set some goals, that would be the second bucket, bucket. They're going to do some surveys and focus groups and put together the results of, uh, different people's perceptions of our inclusive practices. Uh, then they're gonna help go back to the, the DEI committee and put together an action plan to try to address, uh, the deficiencies that they saw through the policy review, um, the surveys and the focus groups.
So related back to the strategic planning.
Yeah, so I apologize if this is in there somewhere, who's gonna be participating in these focus groups?
I think the DEI committee determines that with them as part of the planning process.
And they had suggestions as well, so they can set, students, parents, stakeholders, yeah.
The usual suspects.
Mm-hmm. And this particular group was, the only ones who said what they would do first is a broad survey and then from that we would determine who do we need to hear more from, who did we not hear from, and then use that as a tool to decide.
Broad meaning parents, everybody?
Yes, just a, a, a large survey we throw out and try to get answers from anybody that we can.
Areas that you need more details on, okay.
I think all of this is, you know, this is all new to me, but when the group got back together, apparently this diversity committee formed in about two thousand seventeen after some things happened here and, um, felt like they accomplished a lot in terms of being able to identify things that need to be addressed, but had a hard time really making a lot of concrete progress on actually addressing them. And so now as the group is getting back together, that seemed to be the thing everybody was focused on is how can we get to some concrete actions? And so both of these groups that we're working with are, that's, that's the point, is to figure out what specifically can we do that's gonna make a tangible difference.
And, and a lot of the, I just wanna follow up on what she's saying, a lot of those actions, um, come from a, uh, an experience that some of us don't have, for instance, or a technicality that we don't have. And for us to create wheels, um, and try to learn on the job and try and understand what we're looking for as we're looking at it is very difficult. So, um, without a lot of, uh, a lot of, I'll say homework without a, a real prize at the end of it, like, we wouldn't be able to make progress like we would want to, I don't think we feel like, because we're not even close to experts in what we're looking for or how we're trying to address the situations, so.
So I'm gonna put it in my words, you can tell me where, where I'm off, we've got an idea where we wanna get to and where we should be there, just gonna help us clarify the vision and give us the tools to get to that point.
Yes, and, and specific summaries that would probably help us focus our efforts a lot, leaner.
Yep.
Than trying to figure it out on our own. Did that help, I don't know if I'm being clear.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, I'm gonna go into action item C. I move to approve the memorandum of understanding agreement with Midwest and Plains Equity Assistance Center for diversity consulting services.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Pope, Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Moving forward, I move to approve the diversity consultant agreement with MSN Consulting, Global Consulting as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Pope, Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much, everyone. Next up is an approval of an E-rate category-two expenditure for E-rate year twenty-seven. Is that crystal clear to everyone?
I had to read it for sure.
Perhaps we could use Dr. Reese's quick summary on this one.
Yeah, so the National E-rate Program helps, if we, if we go through these steps, we get some assistance with funding for some of our boxes and wires, generally technology-wise and we need you to approve those purchases beforehand.
Boxes and wires.
Boxes and wires.
Yeah.
Hi, Tech.
Where were you when I was trying to read through all this?
Anything else? Not, I move to approve the E-rate category-two expenditure for E-rate year two-seven for fiber optic cable installation at the Oak Plain Campus as presented, with no purchasing to take place until final approval is granted by the Universal Service Administration Company.
I've got a second boxes and wires.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Carlson, Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Can't tell if people liked that description or if they thought it was ridiculous.
I wish you had just been there when I was trying to read it.
I wish I could vote yes.
You should've read the rest of it, oh my god.
It sounded like professional jargon.
I understood it, it's all typical stuff you get. It is, it, it's just.
Last step is a motion to approve, uh, uh, music department proposed trip to Los Angeles, California in February of next year. Any questions? Anybody wanna volunteer to go with him?
Please.
No, thank you is the correct answer.
I would go.
They always look like fun, I read these and.
You, you made the motion, I second.
I move to approve the Warrentownship High School Music Department trip proposal to Los Angeles, California on February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five to March third, twenty twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Carlson, Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Any other topics or questions before we close?
Jacob, you've been real quiet over there, anything? All right.
If not, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Pope, Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, mo- Five yes, motion carries.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night. Thank you for everything.
Good to see you guys.
Always, always.
Jacob, how's the rest of the theater?